In our regular meeting. I'll make a motion that we come out of the executive session.
I'll second that.
Okay, maybe I have Tracy roll call.
Seven fifty-three.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes, present.
Back in the regular session.
Okay. We don't have any meeting minutes to approve. Ms. Ebbler say your final, your report.
Okay, so you guys received that on Monday or Sunday night, Monday. I sent you guys a copy of that through the email. If you have any questions, let me know. I'm, I still have issues with, now it's not so much the bills getting to me as the trustees getting them outside. Like I said, Mr. Man usually signs them and right away I get Trustee McLaughlin in there, but there's still some sitting in there that need a second signature. And of course, the the resolutions that from the last few meetings are still sitting up, they're not completely signed. So now we're having that problem and we're getting notices from the vendors, you know, for our township properties and facilities and stuff that we're getting late fees. They may be small, but they're late fees and they add up. So we need to try to get those out as soon as possible. I mean, I send you guys texts to tell you it's there. Again, I ask if you could come at least once a week. I have been there at least twice a week, if not more often. So they shouldn't sit in there for two and three weeks.
I'd like to make a comment on that, Tracy, if I may. And I guess I'll just continue with your comment about the key to the back door, so to speak, or I don't think any of us have access to the front door anymore. And I work a lot of hours and a lot of times I'll get a text during the day, Tracy, hey, you need to sign, telling me that, yeah, but by the time I get home and everything, the office is closed. And you know, us as humans, and I tell my guys that work for me, you know, you gotta make something easy for a guy if you want him to do it, will and truly. So I don't know what the, it's just, when are we gonna get the locks and the pass, the swipe cards, the keys, whatever, an easy way? Because so I come in the back door and I gotta hike it up to the security pad thing up in the middle of the building. And it's just a pain in the butt, you know, well, I'll do it in the morning. And then I get up and I'm drinking coffee and before I know it, I gotta go and I didn't go and I didn't get it done and Tracy's mad at me. So I just, to make it easier for us to do that, I'd like to be able to see us make movement on getting the contractors in here, get the swipe cards done, get the locks done, get the security pad, get all that stuff that we paid for finished, please. I think that'd make it easier.
You have to hack it, I gotta do it even worse.
Yeah.
The last I heard was, at least what Steve has said last was that some, and I didn't get an answer, but the county had held up. But did anybody check there with the county to see, are they gonna do anything? Because it's always been held up about the county. I know they own the building, but if they own the building, why did we even make the changes in that building? And it's not so much our building, all the township buildings don't have that access either. So if we don't get our building done, does that mean all the rest of the buildings in the township aren't gonna get the access? Again, like you said, we paid seventy-one thousand dollars and it's not done. We paid that back in December.
I can provide some information to all. Just last week, the county came to me and asked for passwords for the security pad, the brand new one that they installed at the back door. Until that pad is ready, we still have to hike it to the hallway. I, we have, if any of you have a connection at the county as trustees or fiscal officer, please feel free to encourage them to speed up the process. But the swipe card system is strictly a data situation and I had Adrian Jones installing names and programming it at the time before she left.
Who'd you speak to, Steve?
Unfortunately, that project stalled again. So Mike, I will make efforts to figure out somehow because the, we have to enter all the people that are employees, then you have to enter all the access to each person individually, one at a time. So it will take a good while to get that done. Plus, we said to you trustees, when you approved it, that you're gonna sign off on who has access to what building. The department managers have reasons, as you guys probably understand, have reasons why they don't want certain people in certain parts of buildings. And so we have to have that entire process done. But until that keypad gets done here at the back door, we're kind of on hold. But I will make a call tomorrow, if you'd like me to, to the county and see where they are on that process.
And who are you speaking to at the county? So I don't talk to the same person. Who are you talking to?
Hank, Hank, you know, you've met Hank.
Yes, yes, Stanley, Hank Stanley? Yeah.
Yeah, Hank Stanley, he's the director of this facility.
Yes.
So, so that could speed up the process pretty quickly.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else, Tracy?
Also, I still didn't, I just, I mean, I have checked, we still, we're gonna talk about this, but we still gotta get this budget together because we're gonna, in a minute, we're not gonna be able to pay any bills. We won't have any money in the budget to do it. I mean, as far as budgeting for the particular bills. So we're gonna discuss that at later, it looks like, down farther, I think. If not, we can discuss it here, it's up to you guys, but that's all I have for the report. I think, yes.
I'd like to make a motion, we accept the physical officer's report, pay the checks, vouchers, and warrants, and get everything taken care of.
I'll second the motion.
Can I have a roll call, please, Tracy?
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Trustee Man?
Yes. Okay, we are looking at the old business again, meeting minutes. And we should deal with this issue in this, before the next meeting, that we have that taken care of from some of the things that we're looking at now. So on the minutes, I've gotta say, we're gonna be dealing with some things here in the next couple of weeks that should resolve, that we should get this issue resolved. Any other new business that, any old business that we have dealing with other than minutes?
And maybe you guys already addressed it. Oh, the other old business was the spring class in the work session, but that was already addressed. The question was already asked on that, so I guess that's just something they gotta wait on to see who passed the test or whatever.
Hey, Steve?
Yes, sir.
Hey, Steve? In the work session, you stated that you don't pay for it upfront and you only pay for it when you take the class. So you pay for it whether you pass or fail?
No, there was no charge when they went to take the test in Green County. They said that there's no charge until they go to apply for their license.
Okay, so you passed it?
I don't know if that's because, you know, they hiccup with the credit card and that they already sent the books out, so they didn't invoice us for the book, I don't know. But they did not attend the class, so there's no cost if you don't attend the class according to the proctor at the test center. That's what was explained to the four employees that went.
Okay. Well, that makes sense because I was gonna be, you know, most times, an employer will reimburse you for the class, most employers don't pay for this stuff upfront. When you take a class and you pass the class, you pass the test, you pass whatever, then they'll reimburse you. But a lot of employers, if you've got to take continuing education units, you have to take a class or something, a lot of them don't pay for it upfront, so I'm glad we didn't do that.
They, just a little tidbit of information, they took their checkbooks with them thinking they had to pay. And the instructor said no, so they were happy.
Any other old business that we have to address?
I have a question, Mr. Man. Just out of curiosity, what's the meeting minutes? What's the issue with that?
The meeting, the minutes have been, we have not done the minutes. We have some minutes and we are looking at those issues to get those resolved. So we've got to at some point do the minutes. And minutes has to be done at every meeting.
Right, so they weren't recorded or what happened?
They wasn't recorded. We have to have those issues taken care of and
I'd like to clarify that. The meetings are recorded, they're posted, if you're talking about twenty-twenty, they're already posted on the website. The twenty-twenty minutes are recorded. The twenty-twenty-one meetings are recorded because Zoom's reported them. And we have copies of those, those just have not been posted yet. So they are recorded, but the trustees want the minutes written word for word. And that's what the issue is.
There's a, does your Zoom, you know Zoom has a capability of transcribing?
Yes.
That's what I'm saying, we have all of that.
Right, so there wouldn't be a need to to change them, because if you changed them, that alters them, which, there's that legality portion of it, right?
Well, so the issue is the trustees accepting them. We, we have transcribed minutes from Zoom, Zoom call, go transcript. But the issue is that trustees need to accept them. That's the real issue.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, do you have any other old business?
No, I do not.
Okay, let's move to new business. Tracy, on the adjustments to be made to the twenty-twenty-one budget?
Okay, so it's kinda, I'm not sure if that means what I brought up as far as, up in discussing, as far as, again, go back to, in April first, we accepted a permanent budget, but we accepted on a contingency that there will be changes made throughout the year, which is allowed and which we probably will have to do because of budgets of budgets, this estimate of money. So we will have to make changes. So the deficit I'm looking for is any of the department leads would know the best, be able to provide a resolution and they will be able to say, we need to increase this line item by this much, this line item by this much. They would do a resolution for you trustees to then review, since you approved the budget, now you have to approve changes. So those adjustments that, I'm thinking we're talking here, is will be those adjustments we need to do to the budget that the trustees will have to approve and they will be brought to you by resolution. So that would be meaning that each department over each room, blah, 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 would have to, would have to bring a resolution to you guys, ask them to increase the line item or transfer funds or whatever, whatever the case might be, to adjust the budget. So that's what, that's about, we wouldn't do it, excuse me, obviously, we wouldn't do it today, but I would hope we would start doing it soon, like within the next meeting because I know, I know that there's some issues that we've been having and I've been paying the bill that I have to go back either to the department heads and say, there's no more money in that line or there was no money in that line or we need to move my money or they've come to me and said, we ran out of money, what do we do? So we need to, we need to get those, start bringing them to the board. So those are the adjustments I was, I was talking about. And I'm hoping that clarifies that issue. Are there any questions from trustees?
Can I have a comment, Roy and Mike?
Yes.
Can I ask a question? I think it'd be healthy if we, since we are at a six month, almost a six month point, it'd be very healthy if we held a work session to go through each of the departments. And because not only do department managers know where they're running then, but the fiscal officer has an idea about, you know, she made a statement earlier about we're gonna run out of money. So she can share those in that work session also. I think it'd be very healthy for all of us to go through it and make sure that we target the adjustment all at once, at least here in this six month part. And then, you know, have some healthy discussion about what about the rest of the year? And as all of you know, we don't get our next collections taxes, I mean, after the end of the year until the first, the second or third month of March of two thousand twenty-two. So we're really looking at a nine-month budget from today forward, not a six. So I don't know what you have availability, you two trustees and Tracy, but I would suggest a work session would be very good to do.
With the add-on of what Steve says, it's probably, it's probably best to do it more than once or twice a year as well because we get one, we get one, okay, we do the budget in April, we get all our payments in by then for the first half of the year. And then we get another payment in July. So it's probably, it probably would help to try to look at it at least two more times in the year just so that we know that we're keeping on track and we can keep that money. Because sometimes you can say, let's pay this bill, but then you don't have enough money to pay that bill. Because you haven't got your money, even though we predicted a budget based on the whole year, we haven't gotten all that money in the first half of the year. We get some of it in the second half of the year. So even though we budgeted a budget, doesn't mean we have all the money yet. So just, just consider that when you, when we do that. So just know we may have to consider doing, doing it more than once.
Okay. I agree with that because we need to discuss the, some of the fire funds before we get out of here.
I think that's all I have on that issue.
What are you gonna talk about next, Roy? Roy, can you hear me?
He's a mute, Roy, you gotta tell him I'm mute.
Roy Man.
How about that?
There we go, okay, so what are we gonna talk about next? Thanks, Steve. What a face.
I just hit it over here.
No, you're good, you're good, you're good.
You should be, you should be okay.
Yeah, he's good, we can hear him.
Okay, I can hear.
Yep. Okay, so we did a new business one, adjustments to
Oh, if you can, yeah, but you can't, they can't hear you.
You can hear me now.
Yes?
Yes, we can hear you.
Number two under new business, Roy?
Okay, new business, we talked about, we've got a list here of, we just talked about number one of these budget, twenty-twenty-one budget. We are talking about hiring a zoning administrator. We've done, we've done that talk and posting administrative assistant. So those two, three items we've talked about. Is there any need to talk about anything else?
Yes. Other than that, yes, okay, so we're gonna address the, the number two, we'll do it in the resolutions, okay. Other than a new, other under new business is Steve in his packets of stuff, I'm sure everybody has seen that. We brought up this two thousand ten Rosenbauer engine tanker purchase. And that was started at the last meetings, last meeting. And here's the resolution, twenty-one oh one nine. And it's, I'm not so sure if it's out on the posted yet or not. But the Jefferson Township, Jefferson Township authorized the purchase of a two thousand ten Rosenbauer engine tanker for the amount not to exceed two hundred thousand, based on successful inspection of the vehicle and financing established. So we passed that resolution last week and I myself, as a trustee, I had a lot of stress, I felt bad about voting yes on that. In that, and I'm not voting, I'm not saying that because I don't want the township to have a tanker. I'm saying that I was not given all the information I thought I should have been given. And I've done quite a bit of research on that and I know we voted to pass that, but now we have, and Steve in his presentation brought out paperwork of how this group of guys going there Thursday to look at this thing. And a lot of questions there, we need to talk about it. We said that we had approved financing for a hundred and fifty. We only need to see that in writing. Also, the resolution there was two hundred thousand, not to exceed two hundred thousand. And then I heard it went from a hundred ninety to ninety. How does a, if I'm buying a used piece of something, a car, whatever, and it drops half price? What's wrong with it? It just, I'm real leery about doing this. A question, okay, so are we gonna have insurance on it when we drive it home? Where's the money coming from? It's just, there's a lot of, I'm not real happy about, I know I voted yes on that, but I have thoughts on us doing this. We have a rescue vehicle, we have two existing fire engines that are in use. I think this money for this apparatus, we better be put to a new engine. We promised the residents a new tanker. And I think we need to take the money and not do this purchase and go ahead and do a new purchase. And there again, we've had arguments in that resolution there. It states that you won't see a new engine till the end of twenty-two or the beginning of twenty-three. Right in the meeting last week said we have it by the end of the, end of this year. I've talked to other people, they say you can get an engine in six months. What is, you know, we almost need a guy from the fire engine company and not Wright's boss to come talk to us and give us the, what is the truth fact of when you can get an engine? When can we get one? And we don't need, we have enough, we have more seats in engines now than we do firefighters to put in them. We, in, that might sound wrong, we have, say, fifty part-time firemen, I don't mean that. I mean that what we can afford, what our budget of, I think they budgeted three hundred and eighty, I don't know, it's down here someplace. They only budgeted three hundred and eighty thousand or something to put part-time people, firemen, on the job. So in doing that, we've only financed four or five guys around the clock all year. So in four or five guys, why do we need multiple engines? We don't have enough guys to sit in all those seats. So instead of spending ninety thousand or a hundred and ninety thousand to buy this used engine, that might just be a pain in the, you know what, like the, we bought those emergency ambulances from Texas several years back and they became a nightmare, we had to re-chassis them. So what do we, do we really know what we're buying and getting into here and buying this used apparatus when we really don't need it? We need to take that money and put it towards a new one. I think we need to have a discussion on this.
So you wanna have a discussion with the fire chief, administrator? And the trustees?
I think we need to stop the, stop the trip to going to Missouri or wherever it is Thursday. I think that needs to be stopped, put on hold. And, because, okay, so we have three fire trucks, two we can use. We just bought another one, so there's six seats. And we only have financials, finances for four or five guys on the job all the time. Why do we need two more seats? When we can't afford to put somebody in them? I think we need to, I, I think the trip to Missouri needs to be put on hold, first off, and then back up and think about this and order a new engine. Talk to the supplier, when can you have it? You know, what's our timeframe? And if they promise, guarantee they can't see it till twenty-three, like it says in the resolution, then, then maybe buy something. But something that went from a hundred ninety to ninety in a short, very short period of time, this makes a red flag go up in my head, something's wrong with it.
Mike, can I answer some of your questions?
Absolutely.
Okay, number one, there was two brokers listing the truck on the internet. One broker had it at two hundred and twenty-three thousand, one broker had it at one ninety-three. And a third broker was in between that. The city fire chief decided to pull the brokers out of it and sell it direct.
Yeah, city fire, can I just interrupt you for a minute? That city fire, that city fire chief, is that Doug Wright's boss, is that the job?
No, this is a fire chief in Missouri.
Okay.
That owns a truck.
Okay.
So they reached out, they saw that Pete Wright was getting hold of these brokers on a regular basis, so they reached out themselves to Pete Wright and made that offer to sell that truck because there's no broker fees, there's no interstate fees. It's city to city, to government, government to government sale. So that's the reason why the price is so much less. Right or wrong, that's just the fact. Number two, it's fully insured on any vehicle that's acquired within the first sixty days of purchase. So any travel back home would have been covered on that truck. Number three, there's no guarantee that that truck is gonna be what they want. So there's no guarantee, but you passed a resolution, three zero, to purchase the truck, so we started the procedure right away because other departments are trying to buy this truck.
Let them have it.
If you pass a resolution, staff's gotta start running right away or else you're gonna lose out on the resolution that you passed. Number four, we went through the budget in October, November, December, saying We went through the budget in October, November, December, saying that there, that, that because you have one truck failed and two trucks operating, regardless of the quick attack that you purchased, you are going to give a tanker to the western part of the county at least until you got your new one in. And then you reevaluate it in terms of either restelling that vehicle away or maintaining it at that time. But you're putting a tanker in the western county right, the western part of the township immediately. That's what the premise of all trustees were explained and that's what you voted on. Now, the COVID has slowed down the factory. If there is a spec engine out there, in other words, one that you don't, in other words, they have it as a show mob, you, you will get it sooner than two thousand twenty-two or twenty-three. But you don't know because steel just went up again. The cost to produce has just gone up again. So you cannot predict six months, eight months unless you buy a vehicle that does not have all the the bells and whistles that you trustees want. Now, last meeting, you tabled the opportunity to do an RFP, which is not buying the new truck. It was strictly advertising for.
And, and what were we told when we tabled that? We were told that with this meeting, we, we, we would be given the list, the list of things that needed, that the fire department needed on that engine. We were told we were gonna be given that tonight.
The fire chief said he would give that to you and, and, and I don't have.
Okay.
So I can't produce anything I don't have.
Correct. But again, yes, yet, yes, so we, we as trustees did vote to purchase this res, this, uh, uh, used engine. But as I said, I felt that I was not given all the correct information and vital information and I basically want to change my vote. I don't feel that, I think the money would be well, better used, saving that money, use what we got. Um, we don't have the manpower to put in that many seats and then go ahead and let's get a new one ordered. Let's get the township what they want, the new one, put a new tanker on the streets and let's get it ordered. And don't buy this used one. I think we need to put the, the, the tri- the trip that, uh, Doug Wright and the other three guys are gonna do on hold.
Make that a resolution to stop the purchase if that's what you so desire.
How much is a new, a, a, a new fire truck? That, something identical to that, what's the, what's the price on something like that?
Quarter of a million, right, guys? Am I, am I thinking right, Roy? How about you, Greg? How about you, Chief Wilcox? Do you know roughly the ballpark figure?
No, I do not. You gotta be about five or six hundred thousand.
Okay, half million, okay.
So about half a million?
Yes.
This one we only would get for ninety thousand dollars, that's.